It's a matter of and see the recovery for this vast one nation, find it out, it is all the Liberty and fast sprawl.
Coco.
Mayor, Colonel Jim, Mr. Mary.
Here, Councilman Lederman.
Here.
Councilman Bonin.
Mayor.
Mr. Brown.
Eric.
Mayor Ashford.
Eric.
Who are you calling there? Mark Green?
Mark Green, 124 West Bennett Avenue. I am here basically to support schools. Not going to get into the discussion on which you're going to talk about, but I am going to say this. Last year I got involved with the the kids over at school and the yearbook committee. I come to find out that they didn't even have enough money to buy a cheap PSLR camera to take photographs from the yearbook. This is shameful. The way we have ignored and allowed school to suffer over money that we're, we could have worked towards getting them. Is just ridiculous. When you have students going to Woodland Park because they didn't, people don't want to send their kids to our school. And then we're going to find out, we finally get a school board that has worked very, very hard to move the school forward, then we'll find out, well, okay, we've got this beautiful facility, we've got no money to pay teachers to put in there and teach your kids. We've got to do something, and it's up to you to make that decision to make it happen. That's all I got to say.
Right, Mark. You go ahead.
He was down there, 221 Galena Avenue, Crepe Creek. Good evening, Council, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick note, reminder for everybody that this Saturday at the old Homestead House, we'll be having our bed races, our third annual Pearl of Year Day. We, this is our second, second largest fundraiser of the year. As we're all aware, we suffered some severe damage from the hail. And Homestead was non-exempt from that, so we really need your support. There'll be games, races, live music, Carriedale, food trucks, bouncing houses, so I encourage everybody in the room to spread the word. It's right next to the old Homestead House, come down and it starts at noon on Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you. Prove a minute to a fifth regular meeting.
My motion that we approve minutes from the July 5th regular meeting.
I'll second it.
Go please.
Councilman Brown.
Yes.
Councilman Bonin.
Yes.
Councilman Lederman.
Yes.
Mayor Proton, Mr. Mary.
Yes.
Mayor Ashford.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Reports, City Minister.
I'm here, I don't have anything today.
Thank you.
Mr. Eric.
Uh, fun and current call.
Evening, Council, this quick update, I sent this to you while you were all here, so you haven't had a chance to see it yet, but third quarter device counts in. We increased one over the second quarter, so not a significant increase unfortunately. And when you compare to the pre-COVID number, the city is still down 775 devices or 22%. Thank you.
Okay, presentations. We have no presentations, none in the world. New business. You know, I made discussion and consideration approved for the district museum's request for ownership of train car and public restroom facilities. Frank.
Mayor, I don't have anything to add, I didn't even write a memo to you, I think y'all had the workshop with the district museum board, I think they have a recommendation that I put in front of you, sent it to you when I received it. So it's really this item is for y'all's discussion and talking amongst yourselves and giving us direction on the direction you want to go. Any questions from me, I'll be happy to answer any questions. So, just as an update, maybe Stacy can help out. They're, they're wanting the agreement now for, they'll have the train car and we keep the restrooms, correct? That's what I understand, yes. I do think if we're going to keep the restrooms, that we need to own the property under it, so I do think if we're going down that, let's clear the whole thing up. Right. I think the property underneath the rail, the restroom needs to be owned by the city and we need easements to access the restroom. I think the museum was willing to do that, correct?
What would the easements?
Easements would be for the city to be able to access the utility lines that run to the restroom, in case there's an issue, we can fix them. And also if there's work needs to be done on the restroom in the future, there's no going to somebody for approval to fix the roof or point the brick or whatever, so some type of a maintenance easement to get to the restroom. So, as far as the property with the restrooms, I do believe we need a survey, plat- plat- and D. And I think we, the council so desires to transfer the railcar with, needs some document, I don't know if that's a D, Aaron, I think that's, that was one of my questions for you. So D both directions.
Yeah. Uh, again, as we said in a work session, I really don't have any problems with the transfer, however, where my problem exists is I vote, I definitely feel we need an appraisal on that train car. Uh, it has value. And we are trading, the city will be trading value for service or other value. But I, I am fairly convinced that we need an appraisal before anything's done.
Swearing question for you, this transfer, I know there's a question of it being legal to do this, for this to be illegal.
Right, so general rule is that the city needs to receive value for value. But the exception to the general rule is when you're considering getting back or putting the, the property to a valid public purpose.
Right.
So if you're giving it away, donating it, and you're not receiving back value, that's okay, as long as you're receiving back what you determine is a valid public purpose.
Agreed.
Um, like I said in the work session, I want to see the train car utilized over the last three and a half years, and of course we did have COVID for a portion of that. Um, it's been open one, two, three, four, five, six. Not even 12 months out of three and a half years, I don't even know if that was full months, I was, Paul, just going off of your operating stats, the numbers reported and the months open. Um, I'm really confident that the museum is going to have a utilized year round instead of standing there vacant. So.
Well, and I do believe the staff or the city has a budget of what, 22K to, to run the railcar, and that would save us that and that's like you said, we don't, we don't use it, we don't stop it, and I know the museum would use it a lot.
And I'm also good with the swap for the land under the restrooms.
I, I think as far as HP, if the museum was to take it over, they could go after state historic funds, is that correct?
I think they'd come back and test it.
Well, I think they gotta go through and go there first.
We will get, we can go, we can go both, and then the state and city.
Correct.
Yes.
They come back from city for grant, you know.
The city usually offers massive dollars to state grant.
In my opinion, that you know, I've been involved with museum almost 20 years, I've been up there 20 years. And the train car has been back and forth, back and forth, I was on the board, museum board, and so it's never been put to bed, so we feel, I guess I'm speaking for the council somewhat, but we feel it just need to be done legal. And then to add to that, the restrooms uh, what you guys are in agreement to city retain the restroom, but we retain the, we get the property deal to us that the restrooms on plus easement around it to maintain it and get to it. Uh, that would be something that Karen would have to write up.
Yes. The local director of the Crepe Creek Dishing Museum. Um, I know from the survey I have, the bathrooms go over onto the train property about, only about a foot. So that's also might be the one thing we have to try to figure out. I, I do know a bit on that one property.
We have to give Jim a list.
We have certainly done, and it was 2000, let's say 2004, 2010, and it does show that. We're trying to get it all over.
The restroom is probably the bigger service to the railroad than it is to the museum.
Yeah, the restroom goes over on the, on the train.
I'm saying. The, the train gets more benefit out of restroom than anybody else in the city. So, we got some burden, or, or got a foot, or two foot, whatever we get.
I, I think if we go that way, and we just, it's just, I'm just throwing out the various that one, you talked about a survey, I'm just throwing that out there, it might be that one issue because I already, I know that from looking at, so I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you, Bill.
So we would have to go, Jim, listen to the agreement?
Well. This is something that who, cable is to whatever gets or legality is put together.
Probably gonna make a motion to direct. Yeah, I think maybe a motion directs um, the city attorney to work with the city administrator to put together the documentation.
Okay.
I make a motion that we
Wait, wait, I, oh, I'm sorry, before you make a motion. So, an appraisal of the properties out, is that what you're saying?
If we aren't, if we aren't doing, oh, she don't approve, if we aren't doing
I, I think, I think the residents in this community essentially are the ones who have it, are getting screwed. I really do. I'll be informed.
Okay, you should, your point, yeah. So we're having to table this just because you think
So we're giving direction to staff to move forward.
We got
We're going to see your motion to uh, it city attorney and the city manager draft the documents, and that your purpose is to make the trade.
I mentioned getting ready, might get motion.
So.
Both of you, yeah, the city attorney, city staff, they put this on there. And Missy made the motion.
Well, thank you.
Okay.
Mayor, Colonel Jim.
Yes.
Mayor Proton, Mr. Mary.
Yes.
Councilman Bonin.
Yes.
Councilman Brown.
Yes.
Mayor Ashford.
Yeah.
There's nothing in consideration for approval. We call it sales tax election for TC and V District, too, that
You know, Mayor, I think, didn't write the
I think y'all had the meeting with the school board and this is now time for y'all to, we didn't put it on the agenda for y'all to talk amongst yourselves and to make a motion, so I think this is your time now to talk. It's, we've had the public input and everything, but that's your call too, it's the mayor's call and whether he wants to let individuals talk, that's y'all's decision, but the reason we didn't put it before, we want to give you time to think about it, and then we always wait a couple of weeks, put it on the agenda for y'all to have this discussion.
I think we've heard all the discussions from the school board. Uh, at this time, I would allow the, the school board for three minutes.
Good evening, Council, I'm Mary Beals, I'm the president of the RE1 School District. I'm probably going to disappoint you, I don't have three minutes of a presentation, it's going to be short and sweet. I heard you speak about value in regards to the train car. Ours is the same scenario, it's about value, it's about investing in our children, and they are our hope for the future. And uh, we uh, need funds. We have had an uphill battle uh, since uh, gaming has come to town. Uh, we have struggled, but we have been uh, what, uh, proactive in leading the challenges by uh, our industriousness in terms of grant writing and uh, securing funds. Uh, as you know, that the school district, when the act was inaugurated for gaming to the three towns in Colorado, that the school district was not allowed to uh, seek any funds in regards to uh, gaming impacts. If you read the research study that was released almost two years ago in November in regards to the impacts in these three towns in Colorado, uh, they show a very strong picture that the children, and in particular in the RE1 school district, have had extreme uh, challenges to uh, come forward and uh, meet the educational excellence that's required to have upward mobility. This project that we uh, what, inaugurated through the RISE Grant, uh, the one and a half million dollars for Community Buy Skills to Employment Grant, we again took that one and a half million and earned another three million in terms of leverage, that's how we got the, got the rates building that will now go forward as a mini factory that the kids will run and will uh, earn license shares as well as accreditation in the grades businesses. We initially thought uh, that this grant would uh, go forward till uh, September of 2024, which turned out to be erroneous. Uh, anyway, we did put in our sustainable plan to end up going forward to ask the city for a tax initiative. This is not uh, our only fund.
Eric, could you wind up?
Yes, I guess I did do my three minutes. I've always been long, I did. Anyway, I plead with you that you just give us a chance to ask voters to uh, go forward and see if they will support a tax increase to help the children of this community.
Thank you. That's good.
What, what was the reason you didn't go for a mill levy? Could you repeat that, your reasoning?
Well, initially, and you were all invited, and I think all of you came, or, or the majority of you came to our stakeholders meeting, and we talked about uh, going forward with different fund mechanisms, and at first, we really felt that uh, the mill levy was the way to go forward. However, probably the week after uh, that uh, initiative or that conversation, it came out in the paper again that everybody was going to have a uh, very large shock in regards to property values going up 30 to 100%. And uh, we just, at this time, feel we cannot overcome that uh, what uh, amount of monies that are now being assessed to people's properties and the negativity that's surrounding.
Uh, yeah, but again, it seems to me that the majority of, well, with the ones that sales tax falls on uh, Crepe Creek only, what, why isn't Victor included in this?
And I spoke to that, but again, it's about 100, what did I say, 165,000 that they uh, get from their 6.9% sales tax, and they're capped when they pass this last time, they, they cannot uh, go forward with a uh, what, an, an increase.
Right.
And we did go a different direction, and obviously through this mini factory, we're going to need places for our homes, and they have entered into an MOU with the school district to help us place those homes in uh, on property that they own as well as uh, oh, uh, reduction in any type of utilities.
Do you have any backup plan if this doesn't, if the voters don't vote this through, if we do put it on the ballot? It just sounds like we're riding strictly on this.
No, no, I'm going to tell you, I believe in the diversification of funding. Otherwise, I wouldn't even be standing here. And so there are several things. One of the things that we will go forward is to establish ourselves as a foundation uh, with the school district, which will then give us the ability to move forward with gaming impact committees. It will also give us the ability to enter into a enterprise zone. And so, but again, uh, we know just from our success with the Aspen Main Center capital campaign that, that enterprise zone is, is a very good way to uh, gather support financially as well as materially. And obviously, there are other things. We just bought a chance.
You can, yeah, I got my answer. Thank you.
Um, my concern is uh, if we move forward with this, putting in ballot language, I'd like to see it dedicated to the trade school and adult education. Um, I think our kids have a really good chance with this program, and the adult education is great, people having a chance to get a GED, and I'd like to see it dedicated to that program rather than just a general slush fund. That's my opinion.
And, and that will be in the language, that's what we pass.
Okay.
My take on this is it appears to me that Crepe Creek taxpayers are going to support those funding on the school for increasing funding. Uh, what about that land, like mountain estates and all these places, how are you going to collect from them?
Well, I kind of see it this way, uh, Milford, that the majority of our parents work here, they're employed right here.
I know that, man, but
And so it, it again, it, it is, you know, that they're not necessarily residents that are actually, you know, paying a water bill, but they're still coming and supporting this economic engine to again contribute to the finances of the city. So I, I see it, you know, as, as that, I um, we're working on something else, and again, I see that uh, the county is not going to be left out of the equation.
Well, we speak to the fact here right now. And again, uh, you know, as, as represented in the cities of Crepe Creek, we elected to take burdenage first and then we've got to take care of the city. And the city, same way as schools, we were very limited on funds. And well, if there's any increase in sales tax, you know, words, whatever it is, the city needs that for streets, uh, all infrastructure. So, all kinds of same boat. I'm, I'm 100% for school and supporting school 100%, but we've got obligations to the citizens of Crepe Creek. Or the taxation of citizens of Crepe Creek.
But then again, I'm thinking, you know, the, the city, the constituents, that can their voice come to the table on this, and, and again, there's, there's a chance, we're still going to take and have to justify uh, this 1%, and it, it's got to be logical in their heads to go forward with this. And again, I, I would just like the opportunity, it's like the Aspen Main Center, and again, our tax initiative is three tenths of a cent, uh, that we started uh, way back in 2002, and uh, again, uh, this last time we passed it in 2018, we had an 85% approval.
We need to move on.
Okay.
Please.
Yes.
Yeah.
I understand your concern, Milford, unfortunately, our citizens did not want to increase the tax to fix potholes, which is unfortunate. And this is something that we could put a sunset clause on, yes. And just, Paul, didn't we do, I just have a question for Paul. Didn't we do to help fund the auditorium and Jim do a brief sales tax, was that 3A and B that that went towards, like, geez, 18 years ago? No, we had something.
Had to lease funds to any other organization that, that sales tax, we will be carrying.
Okay, I thought 3A and B was what we did, and had a three-year sunset on it. I've said my piece, okay.
Okay, uh, do I hear a motion to consider approval?
I'd like to just say something real quick. Um, this has been a really hard decision for me, you know, I've been a, I was an alumni, and Crystal is, my kids are, and my granddaughter goes to school. Uh, so, you know, we all been part of school for a long time, and, but like, uh, we said, we're city officials and we represent city of Crepe Creek and the residents, and we got to look out for the city also. Uh, you know, I can see, I Uh, you know, I can see I support a mill levy increase because that would include the whole school district and everybody be contributing. That's, you know, just my opinion, but uh like I said, uh, that's my opinion. At the end of the day, I I would uh. Look at for supporting uh putting on the ballot and let the voters decide. That's your your. Barrogative, you know, which which you're there for. So I mean, I can't just say, that's my personal opinion, and I mean, that's all right for you guys not to have your. Chance to vote on it. So that's just my opinion. Well, I guess with that said, I'll make a motion that uh we put the sales tax tax increase on the November ballot.
One second.
Vote please.
Mayor Prochintenary?
Yes.
Councilman Livingland?
No.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Bowman?
Yes.
Mayor Ashworth?
No.
Well, thank you very much. I uh again, I uh, we have our work cut out. And I again, uh, thank you uh for your support and I I don't think we'll disappoint you.
You got a lot of work to do in a short amount of time.
Oh, trust me, I I have seen this my whole life.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, United C. Second reading and public hearing to consider through adopter or ordinance. Twenty twenty three, that's the way you approve the change of zoning from R one to C one for certain really safe. Property described in L one two eight. But thirty six to forty one. B two, L one two six, L forty seven to fifty three, B three. L five five three six nine, B four. L nine to twelve. L forty eight to forty nine of uh Kripke Creek. Kadia Heights, including notation. S T of vacant one avenue, adjacent vacant. Arena Avenue, adjacent vacant Whitey Avenue, adjacent vacant. Of pencil L Avenue, Avenue, and adjacent vacant alleys described at. Three nine two eight seventy nine, also known as Larson Park. And at this time, I have an opening statement before we move on to the hearings. I will know publicly carrying an application submitted by John Freeman for approval of. Change of zoning from R one and residential to C one industrial for property known as Larson Park. Notice of this hearing has been given as required by Kripke Creek Development Code and. Copy of such notice and of the topics that have dated are hereby made a part of the record of this proceeding. The purpose of this hearing is to consider whether the zoning could be approved in consideration that matter. This hearing will address the approval standards and criteria set forth in section. Four point six point one of the Kripke Creek Development Code. The following procedure. Could be, the the procedure to be followed for this public hearing will be as follows. First, the city staff will first adjourn and summarize the case. Second, the applicant or the applicant representative may present any evidence in favor of granting the application. Number three, at the conclusion of the applications, applicant's case, any person wishing to speak in sport. Of the applicant's application may present evidence. Therefore, any person wishing to speak against public application. May then present evidence. Number five, then I ask for a motion to vote in both comment. Number six, the applicant may then present any rebuttal evidence. All presenters and witnesses will identify themselves and provide their address and their before speaking. All statements and testimonies will be addressed to counsel and not to the applicant. At the conclusion of the hearing, the council will reconvene. And will deliberate and make any decision on this. Application, the council may grant or deny the application. And therefore, any objection to the jurisdiction of this planning commission. Of the city council to the form or substance of these proceedings. And in second. If hearing none, that will reject it.
Everybody in the man council, um, this is the second reading of the. Resiling proposal for freedom of talk with South on the fourth street, and I do apologize for lengthy legal description. Brief presentation of the project uh. The property is located in the south end of. Fourth Street adjacent to the railroad light of one uh that I read. And the proposal is to change the zoning from R one to C one industrial. Reason for this is that um the Freemans are proposing to construct a storage facility. At have this location and. It is a permitted use within the C one, but prohibited in the other. Uh residential is on this. And so. There we go, highlighted in red, the southeast corner of the city. Uh, currently undeveloped. Basically, uh, it's to the left of the road is is. The zoning proposed to be C one. And we have C one adjacent to the property on the northwest corner. You are one is across the road, it's left of C one development. There is C one to the south and the triangle below the red. Space is probably also owned by the Freemans, which is proposed to be annexed. And they're requesting a C one on that future annexation show move forward. So there will be a continuous C one in the area. Uh, the R two. Will be bit of an island, but with the adjacencies to the C one, it is permitted use. Uh, done change by state statute. It's not a pocket zone as quite. Which is disallowed by state. Uh, yeah, here's the subject property. It's rotated north is to the right in this case. We see the box of glue between the primary road and the railroad. This is the location for the proposed L C storage facility. Uh, just received this the other day, but the basic footprint of the building floor plan is being proposed. It's a number of ten by ten storage lockers along with some five by ten on the south. And uh, review the elevations uh over indoors and all of these various size, basically the size. The ends will be enclosed. So proposals meet the standard stipulated in the criteria for the. Approval of the zoning change, the development code, and we recommend approval of the source of the. Zoning change to allow for the self-storage facility. I guess if you want to know that. If there is a zoning change is approved, maybe the uses uh allowed at the C one would be available until uh. Life or construction is included. Just a side note that. The adjacent proposed annexation, uh, there's residential help proposed to that property in the future. Should be annexed. Any questions council may have at this point?
I do. How many units did you say it's going to be?
Stores, I don't have the count, the applicant is here. And John, can you tell you the exact numbers? I didn't actually.
Okay, and also you have under staff recommendation, you use to uh see changes on to allow for the construction. You're just not going to set in. Metal containers, are you?
It's not a containers, no, it is a uh fabricated uh building. It's a metal building. Have those rigid frames, concrete slab uh. And as we get into the review, uh, there's some modifications that have been made, so I don't have almost metal for building permit yet. The approval of the zoning is part of that process, but uh we'll get this on those details.
Thank you.
Yeah, but that can just hear.
Yeah, at this time, that could be speaking.
Evening, council. Uh, John Freeman, four ten, South Fourth Street. Um. So yes, we are looking for uh our second reading approval so we can get moving on the storage units facility. Uh, the storage facility is constructed of a general steel building, um, constructed strictly of metal siding. Uh, roll up metal doors and roll up a metal roof. It is a building structure. There are not going to be shipping containers. It's not going to be laid out in any any form other than a true. Storage facility I'm constructing in the process. It's a hundred, this at this go around, we're a hundred and fifty feet long, twenty feet wide. Facility will be accessed on both sides. We're doing twenty four ten by tens and twelve five by tens to start with, kind of see where um. You know, things go and we have a desired or uh. Anybody else looking for more storage? We we have the facility to actually add on to this in the future. Uh, but we're going to start with this in in conjunction with the annexation that we were talking about earlier. Uh, that will hopefully um continue on our next hearing um on second, I do believe. And that will too then be a part of this and we're gonna do some sort of uh. Small housing project on that as well. This is the unit's gonna be uh. Fenced off gated. Other than getting, it's gonna be fenced off at all. You know, so there'll be open gate. Um, I don't see the 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 need at this time to facilitate a gate or any type of uh gate code of that sort. Because of, once we get into the annexation port, and I know this is kind of jumping ahead, our intent is to actually define. Uh, these properties, um, come back in with a some sort of minor subdivision style. Uh, we will then outline the entire facility along with then. Uh, the housing project as well that we're looking at doing, uh, breaking this all up and actually putting everything. In conjunction with lots, working with obviously the city, um, in some sort of easement as well. Along with uh defining what used to be Fourth Street, moving it onto that road and and maybe hopefully defining an actual road over there. Street of some sort that we can actually call it a city road, a city, a city road. So will it be any kind of lighting, John, or some kind of security? I mean, so, yeah, so our our plan is to put up uh definite um. Security uh twenty four hour, seven day a week lighting on the facility along with proposed uh. Cameras as well or security. Um, I'm not a fan of, I've had security or I've had storage units in the past. Um, I'm not a big fan of storage facilities that are not secure and worse done by security. Uh, it protects everybody involved, protects you as as a as a person trying to rent there, and it also protects the landowners. In any case, that there is any type of vandalism or any type of, you know, running with whatever. We we can go back on cameras. Uh, it's a long story, you know, but. The creek down there is, we've used it several times in in behalf of the, you know, department of the police and for us. Um, the people who come in. So I think it's a, it's a good thing, uh, but yes, we will have the security lights and those security cameras, so. Really quick.
Thank you. Isn't anyone listening, speaking, spoiler, pick? Anyone wishing to speak against the application? Oh, that's for motion to close the public comment.
I'm motioning we close the public comment. I'll second that.
Vote please.
Councilman Livingland?
Yes.
Mayor Prochintenary?
Yes.
Councilman Bowman?
Yes.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Ashworth?
Yes.
Uh, anybody, uh, applicants may present any rebuttal. Anything else to say, John?
I'll I'll say one more thing just to, I mean, because I'm gonna plug myself into there just for just a quick second since I didn't say it already, but. For the city and I want everybody to understand how we're running this, this is gonna be a facility that's going to be um. You know, I won't say state of the art, but it will have a website. It's going to have everything that you can do on the website. Anybody can go onto the website, reserve, request, pay their bill. It's a reoccurring payment. They send out text messages, emails, so it's gonna be a lot of hands off from. Our point of view, but at the same time, being very convenient for anybody who wants to come in and actually rent the space. Um, you know, obviously, it's gonna be an unheated building, uh, but it will have a concrete floor. It's gonna be designed and and well-built. So, uh, you know, probably here in the next future, as as we go forward, now that we've got to get this behind us. Um, the website should be up and running here within probably the next two weeks. Thank you.
All right, uh, the council's back in in session. Um. Counselor can move the reason.
I thought I had to do the motion already. Great. I move that we approve ordinance number twenty twenty three dash zero eight.
Don't you think I have rhythm?
I thought when ordinance happened, it didn't go. That'll work. Okay, cool.
Vote please.
Mayor Prochintenary?
Yes.
Councilman Livingland?
Yes.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Bowman?
Yes.
Mayor Ashworth?
Yes.
General D has been taken off the agenda for tonight's talk. It's completely rubbish through the evening.